In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Secaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board of the Education Administration building as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record Jersey Journal and District website.
Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we begin.
We have to do Roco.
You're gonna do Roco? Okay, Roco.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. Diadetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Diombre?
Present.
Dr. Farinola?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Kish?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present. Okay, so before we begin, we do have a proclamation that we are going to have read. So, Mr. Bartletta is going to read that proclamation.
Whereas Board Policy 7250, school and facility names impose certain requirements before a person may be recommended to the Board for memorialization in a school building, room, or structure name, including that the proposed honoree may not be considered for memorialization during their lifetime but must be deceased for at least three years before being considered for such memorialization. And whereas the Board wishes to suspend the three-year requirement set forth in Policy 7250 to consider the recommendation of the Policy Committee to name the high school track the Stan Frazinski Track in recognition of Mr. Frazinski's distinguished career in the Secaucus School District for 33 years, serving as athletic director for 22 years until his retirement in 2011. Whereas the Board has determined that all of the other criteria set forth in Board Policy 7250, including but not limited to Stan Frazinski's length of service to others, examples of exemplary service performed by him, his impact on the students he served at Secaucus High School and the Secaucus community, and the ideals and the integrity that he consistently demonstrated. Whereas the suspension of the three-year requirement shall only be for the purpose set forth in this resolution and shall otherwise remain a requirement for any future recommendations under Policy 7250. And whereas the Board Policy 0131, bylaws and policies, requires policy amendments to be proposed and approved at a previous Board meeting of the Board unless the Board suspends the operation of a bylaw or policy. And whereas the Board has determined it is appropriate to suspend the three-year requirement of Policy 7250 to permit the naming of the Secaucus High School Track in honor of a former administrator who otherwise meets all the other criteria set forth in this policy. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board hereby determines that it shall honor Stan Frazinski, who demonstrated the highest ideals and integrity of the Secaucus School District and the community it serves by naming the Secaucus High School Track the Stan Frazinski Track. Be it further resolved that the acting superintendent and business administrator are hereby authorized to take any and all action necessary to implement this resolution.
Hold the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
I hereby certify that the within resolution was adopted by the Secaucus Board of Education by a majority vote at its duly authorized meeting on June 15, 2023.
Congratulations.
Obviously, I'm a little emotionally strung out at the moment. I had no idea about this. I had absolutely, I was tricked into coming under a completely false pretenses as to why I was coming to this meeting. I loved every moment that I worked here. I love every moment that I continue to have the honor to still be able to be involved and coach here. I have nothing but warm heart for every year that I had the opportunity to teach and then serve as athletic director and coach. Jeez, I'm sorry. This is a wonderful honor, and I am truly taken by it. I hope that I can continue to live up to all of the nice reasons why you felt to do this. This was truly unexpected. Thank you very much, really.
You like that?
Showcase?
Can I just say one quick thing?
Sure.
I just want to say one thing. It was an absolute pleasure to be able to read that. Mr. Frazinski was my fifth grade teacher and was also my track coach, so.
Okay, we have showcase. We have the STEM Fair winners.
Good evening. Mr. Dylan Caruso and I are here tonight to present this year's winners from the Secaucus High and Middle School STEM Fair. This year, on May 23rd, we returned to a full-scale STEM Fair where all STEM Academy High School students and all honors science students at SMS participated in designing and executing their choice of a science, STEM, or engineering project. We also returned to in-person judging for the first time since COVID, and we are happy to share that this event was a major success. We would like to take a minute just to thank both principals, Mr. Vigiani and Ms. Candela, both assistant principals, Mrs. Morgaki and Mr. Kukuchi, for their continued support, as well as Coach Voorhees for allowing us to use his precious blue gym for the day. I would also like to thank all of our judges who volunteered their time to meet with our students and judge the over 100 student projects that were presented that day, and a thank you to the custodial staff who set up and broke down for us. So I'm going to begin by presenting certificates to the middle school winners, and we would like to apologize, your physical medals did not arrive in time for the Board meeting, and we will reach out to you when you can come and pick those up from me next week. When I call your name, please come up to collect your certificate, and please wait for all middle school students to be called so that we can take a photo. So the following students earned bronze this year. Ryan Asim, Shriya Inamdar, and Arsh Kadwani. The following students earned silver. Together on their project, Zachary Yun and Lucas Rodriguez. Together on their project, Wyatt Chin, Samid Vias, and Tyler Lemais. And Anad Swaman Orion. The following students earned gold. Elizabeth Aquino and Sarah Velaz for their project. For their project, Voice Controlled Lamp. Gianni Barvad, Sia Chopra, and Jacinda Pun for their project, Can You Handle the Truth? Parth Kot for his project, Can Liquid Density Effect Straw Siphons? Jude Amato for his project, Whatever Can Float Your Boat? Donika Zolowitz and Belinda Lynn for their project, The Growth of Pea Plant in Different Lights? And Aneisha Desai and Paraskevi Christopoulos for their project, Just Keep Cool. So we're just gonna break for a quick second to grab a picture, and then we'll move on to the high school winners. So for our high school winners this year, we had many very high-level projects taking place in the STEM Academy. I would like to congratulate all STEM Academy students on their accomplishments this year. And again, please come up to collect your certificate and just wait for all high school students to be called so that we could take a photo. The following students earned bronze. Together on their project, Arman Shaw and Paul Yun. Vatsal Dovedi. Mahir Wadwani. The following students earned silver. Haley Nowak. Together on their project, Arnav Pandey and Param Patel. Drew Katadia. And the following students earned gold. Wait till you hear the names of these projects. Simran Batla for her project, Microplastics in the Marine Environment. Angelina Lynn for her project, Deep Fake Detector Inadequacies. Ayush Agarwal for his project, Transformers. Transformers versus computational neural networks and analysis of image segmentation and anomaly detection performance. Naja Agarwal for her project, Compost Optimization Using Geographic Location to Maximize Crop Yield. Crochet Bhavstar for his project, Heap Optimization with the A-Star Pathfinding Algorithm. And then, on behalf of Mrs. Kathy Taylor, I would like to take some time to present the Hudson County STEM Showcase winners from this year as well. So please come up to collect your awards also. So in the high school biomedical and health science category, Kresha Patel earned silver for her project, Sucrose, Glucose, and Fructose: Uncovering Hidden Sugar in Your Food. In the high school computational biology and bioinformatics category, Ayush Agarwal earned silver for his project, Context-Oriented Vision-Based Classifications of Lung Cancer Nodules. Ayush also won the United States Air Force Award with this project. In the engineering, technology, statistics, and dynamics category, Arnav Pandey earned bronze for his project, Effect of Excessive Heat on Computer Speeds. And finally, Rashid Jakatia was awarded the Rico US Inc. Award for her project, Creating Biodegradable Sap to Fight Droughts. Congratulations to all winners from both Secaucus High School and Secaucus Middle School. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the Seal of Biliteracy.
Good evening, everyone. By achieving the Seal of Biliteracy, students demonstrate that they are able to speak, read, listen, and write in two or more languages at a high level of proficiency. Upon earning this honor, eligible students will have the insignia, the New Jersey State Seal of Biliteracy, placed on their transcript, and they will receive a certificate from the state of New Jersey at the time of graduation. A special thank you to our world language supervisor, Christine Wiswesser, and to our world language teachers, Mrs. Yvette Beltran, Mrs. DeGenero, Mrs. Duca, Mrs. Rodriguez, Mr. and Mr. Eisenberg, for their assistance in helping students achieve this recognition. I see we have some of our teachers in the back. Thank you for your support. Congratulations. This year, we have 28 students. When we first provided this option to our students several years ago, we had about 16, so the number keeps growing each year, which is wonderful to see. Our first recipient is Zoe Krotansky. And Camila Pimentel, Spanish. Melanie Rios. Nicole Rocha. Destiny Sarada. Corinne Vasquez. Damaris Akamada. Naja Agarwal. Tristan Castro. Amaya Coniel. Gianna Marin. Kevin Quahara Gomez. Jorge Rodriguez. Daniela Vasconcelos. Sophia Lee. Jose Bonilla Moreira. Michelle Castro-Penna. David De La Cruz. Mario Montero Medina. Randolph Ramirez. Fabiana Samper. Sebastian Valdeveso. Manish Kandapalli Charakuru. Stephanie Lewis. Ariana Jimenez Rivera. Maria Isabel Elroy. Pedro Ferrera Elvez. And Stephen Coronel. Congratulations.
Hudson County Teen Arts winners?
We are also proud to be honoring the following art students on their achievements this year at the Hudson County Teen Arts Show and in this year's Scholastic Art Competition. The Hudson County Teen Arts Show showcases the most talented students from every Hudson County high school art program. Students are judged and awarded based on individual artworks. Our first honoree is Brennan Papa. Brennan was awarded top honors for a self-portrait he created. Of all the students participating from our school, his art was recognized as the strongest piece from our district. Congratulations. And the following students received judges' award at Teen Arts this year. An individual artwork of theirs was recognized out of all of the students participating throughout the county. Congratulations to Mina Gadas. Kevin Quahara. Neil Deleva. Anello Mosco. And Andrea Morabel. We are also honoring students who received honorable mention in this year's Scholastic Art Competition. The Scholastic Art Competition is a national art competition that recognizes the strongest student applicants based on originality and skill. The following students had work that was recognized amongst applicants from the entire country. Congratulations to Natasha Medina and Isaiah Fromeda.
Congratulations, everybody.
Organization report?
Good evening. I'm Rob Valenti, principal of Huber Street School. As you know, the end of the school year is extremely busy. On May 24th, our fifth graders met with Officer Bill Echols for one last time as they completed the LEAD program. Thank you to Officer Echols for constantly reminding our students about making good choices and working with them their entire school career. The month of June opened with one of my favorite events of the year, the kindergarten play. Each year, our kindergarteners put on a spectacular show, and this year was no exception. This year's show was called "Bada Bing It's Spring," which may be the most New Jersey name you could have for a kindergarten play. Special thanks to Lacey Rozanski, Maria Ulrich, Carrie Martin, Katie Daly, Nicole Lane, Marnie Tranny, Nikki Giandani, and Corinne Cullison for all of their hard work. The set was amazing, the students were fantastic, and our audience loved it. On Monday, June 5th, our fifth graders traveled to Claridin School to dance the night away at the annual fifth grade social. Special thanks to my teammate, Dr. Danielle Garzone, for hosting this fun night. The next morning, Secaucus Middle School Rock Band visited Huber Street to play a full concert for our entire school. They lived up to their name as they rocked the house. I'm always amazed at how talented they are. Thank you to the maestro, Mr. Sean Sonnet, for bringing his band to our gym. Later that same night, the PTA hosted the annual fifth grade family dinner. Our bears and their loved ones were treated to carnival games, music, prizes, and some pretty fantastic food. Thank you to Kim Quinn, Lori Cerny, and their team for putting together an amazing night. Special thanks to Mayor Mike Gennelli and the Secaucus Town Council for providing the games and prizes and the Secaucus ice rink, which is turfed over. We are truly grateful to have such a supportive team helping create memories for our students. On Wednesday, June 7th, we hosted a surprise retirement assembly for Lucy Beigler and Joanie Namira. Each grade did something special for each of our retirees. Poems were recited, gifts were given out, songs were sung, and tears were shed. It was a fitting tribute to two excellent teachers. Special thanks must go to Cindy Vieira and Alexis Leppen for planning and running this wonderful event. Later that same afternoon, just as the sky was turning orange, we hosted our annual kindergarten orientation. Pre-K students were placed with kindergarten teachers while parents were presented information about the upcoming school year. The next morning, we were treated to Career Day. A number of parents and members of our community presented information about their careers to our entire school. Thank you to Jamie Vigiano for running this great event. On Friday, June 9th, under the direction of Officer Chris Rinaldi, the Secaucus Police Department held the annual torch run. Events were held at the Milrick School and Huber Street School. On Tuesday, June 13th, all students from pre-K through 4th grade were treated to Field Day. The students had a great time. Thank you to Alexis Leppen for running this wonderful event at Huber Street School and Rebecca Jacobson at the Milrick School. While Field Day was going on, our fifth graders were celebrating their upcoming promotion at the Secaucus Swim Center for their annual pool day. They spent the day with students from Claridin School. Thank you to our PTA for the food and music, and thank you to the Secaucus Recreation Department, in particular, John Schwartz and Mike Piero, for making the day as smooth and fun as possible. On Wednesday, June 14th, our Milrick School team held their annual pre-K promotion ceremony. The students were absolutely adorable, the songs were fantastic, and the parents loved every second of it. Thank you to each and every member of the Milrick team. Placed in front of you tonight is the Huber Street School 5th Grade Yearbook. Carrie Stam has worked all year on that and provided me with a copy for each of you to hand to you tonight. If you take a look through it, you'll see all of her hard work in addition to the fun memories that our students had. Earlier today, our fifth graders competed alongside their Claridin School counterparts at the annual track meet. Thank you again to Dr. Garzone and the Claridin 5th Grade Team for hosting us. Thank you to Brittany Yanetti and Ryan Mealy for running this great event. This afternoon, our 4th Grade Team hosted their annual 4th Grade Father's Day Kickball Game. The students and dads had a blast. Thank you to Alyssa Curry, Bill Millivoy, Janine Paduto, Melissa Lopina, Gillian Bonner, and Chuck Gasser for making this day possible. On Tuesday, June 20th, at 6:00 PM, our fifth graders will be celebrating their promotion ceremony right here at the Arthur F. Couch Performing Arts Center. A few moments ago, I referenced six different events that took place in the Huber Street School Gymnasium over the span of just a few days. Each of those events had a different physical setup and a different seating arrangement. That work doesn't happen with a snap of a finger. It happens because people like Enzo Castelli and Bill Heaney work hard to get it done quickly and get it done well. Thank you to Enzo, Bill, and their entire team for making all of our events happen seamlessly. Congratulations to Lucy Beigler and Joanie Namira. Countless students are smarter and more musical because of Lucy and Joanie. You will both be missed. I wish you nothing but health and happiness in your retirement. Congratulations to our colleague, Jerry Kaiser. It has been a pleasure working with you these past few years. Lastly, good luck to Dr. Danielle Reiser. Dr. Reiser and I started our journey in Secaucus together a long time ago in a galaxy not so far away, as we were both hired in the summer of 2000 to begin our careers here. I wish you success and happiness on your new journey. Thank you for your support and guidance these past two years. Thank you. Good night and happy summer.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Danielle Garzone, principal of Claridin School. Throughout the month of May and June, staff and students participated in various end-of-the-year activities and events. Over the last few months, our 3rd grade classes have been working hard on their wax museum. Students chose a famous person they were excited to learn about and did plenty of research on how they contributed to society. On May 23rd, students presented to staff, students, and their families. This project incorporated history, reading, writing, and public speaking all in one project. Great job to all of our 3rd grade students. It was amazing to see what you accomplished. On May 24th, the Claridin Dance Club performed for our staff and students. Later that evening, our families joined us for the "Back in the Nineties" performance. They did an incredible job. Thank you to Ms. Lisa Lucio and Ms. Ashley Vitello for organizing such a wonderful event. During the Memorial Day Assembly on May 25th, students sang songs, recited poems, read personal essays, and presented a check to our veterans for the veterans of foreign wars. Thank you to our students and staff for all of the hard work you put into making this day extra special. The Claridin School Drama Club members in 4th and 5th Grade put on a wonderful two-night performance of Moana Junior. They also put on a show for their classmates. The talented students memorized lines, songs, and dance routines. A special thank you to the Drama Club Director, Melissa De La Cruz, for your dedication to our students. Our students took their love of drama to the next level. June 1st is a day to remember for our kindergarteners and their families. Our students performed their kindergarten play, rocking through the decades. Students showcased all they have learned this year. They grew as learners and were shining stars on stage. Thank you to the kindergarten team for putting together such a wonderful show. On June 5th was the LEAD graduation, where students in 5th Grade celebrated their completion of the program. Thank you to the Secaucus Police Department and Officer Echols for such a memorable event. That evening was the Claridin and Huber Street 5th Grade Dance held at Claridin School, hosted by all of our 5th Grade Teams. The 5th graders had a great time socializing and dancing with their friends. Fun was had by all. On June 6th, we had a career fair. Students dressed up in their career of their choice. It was an exciting day for our students who got introduced to a variety of careers by parent volunteers, who spoke to each grade level about their different professions. Our 5th graders then had an opportunity to present their career of their choice to our students. Thank you to Mrs. Doring for organizing the event and to all those who participated. On June 7th, the Claridin PTA held our annual 5th Grade Celebration at the Town Ice Rink. Our 5th graders and their families enjoyed an evening of carnival games, laughter, and great company. Thank you to our PTA for organizing such an incredible event, and to Mayor Gennelli and the Town Council for your generosity in putting together all of our carnival games and our bounce houses. On June 7th, we also held our kindergarten orientation, where incoming kindergarten students and their families had an opportunity to meet the kindergarten team in addition to learning about the curriculum and how their child's experience at Claridin will be a great one. On June 13th was the Claridin and Huber Street 5th Grade Pool Day. It was a great opportunity to not just have fun, but get to know students from both schools. Thank you to our PTA for their food and our music for the day. Everyone had such a great time. On June 14th was the Fun-Filled Day for our students at the End-of-the-Year School Bash. Students from grades kindergarten to 5th grade spent the day outside, participating in activities such as bowling, blow-up slides, pitching machines, face painting, cornhole, ring toss, and dunk tanks. Thank you to Mayor Gennelli for the bounce houses and the fast pitch games. Thank you to Mrs. Sarah Jaron, Mr. Ryan Mealy, and Mrs. Chrissy Schiffer for organizing the event, and thank you to our parent volunteers who came out to help. On June 15th, the 5th Grade students and staff from Huber Street School visited Claridin to participate in our annual track meet. The students competed in different events, which included a tug-of-war competition. A huge thank you goes out to Mr. Ryan Mealy and Ms. Brittany Yanetti for organizing such a wonderful event. Some upcoming events is the Claridin 5th Grade Clapout, taking place on June 20th at 11:45 AM, and the Claridin-Huber Street 5th Grade Promotion Ceremony will be held here at the PAC on Tuesday, June 20th at 6:00 PM. Before I end this evening, I would like to thank the staff at Claridin School who continue to demonstrate hard work and dedication. Thank you to our students and their families for an incredible year. To Dr. Reiser, I wish you the best of luck and success in your next adventure. It has been a pleasure working with you. To all of our retirees, it has been a pleasure and an honor working with every single one of you, and I know that once, I'm sorry. Once a Claridin Bee, always a Claridin Bee. So continue to come, visit us, share your expertise with everyone in the world, and you will be greatly missed. Have a great evening and a wonderful summer.
Good evening. Christine Candela, principal of Secaucus Middle School. Our Concert and Rock Band performed this month, and as usual, the event was outstanding. Sean Sonnet's ability to inspire and lead our young musicians is unparalleled. Our whole school got to enjoy the band performing at a school assembly as well. Then the Rock Band went on tour for two days to Huber and Claridin to show off their talents. Mr. Ciuffakis had his chorus performance as well, and it was wonderful to see our middle and high school students come together and blend their voices to sing so beautifully. The Middle School PTO hosted an amazing dinner dance for our graduates on May 24th. We had decorations, dancing, and glow sticks for days. Natalies provided delicious food, and our parents and teachers graciously staffed this milestone event. Our 8th grade trip to Philadelphia kicked this week off, and we ended it with a visit to the town pool. I'm so grateful that we have this trip to offer our students year after year, to be able to connect with them outside of school and see each other in a different way during mealtime, interacting at all the historical places we got to visit, which this year included a spooky visit to the Eastern State Penitentiary and a return to Hershey Park and Chocolate Town. Truly was a great bonding experience, not just for them, but for all the faculty who chaperoned. Mr. Maraz's Environmental Club thoroughly enjoyed their three-day field trip that was sponsored by the New Jersey Division of Environmental Protection and the Hackensack River Keep Organization. Next week, Mr. Kukuchi and I will have the pleasure of meeting with both 5th Grades when they visit the PAC for graduation practice. We use this opportunity to introduce ourselves and our counselors and give them an overview of all the fun things they have to look forward to in middle school. We will also be hosting a 5th Grade Evening Event and daytime tours in August, and we'll be sending signup information to all families the first week of July. On Monday, June 19th, Secaucus Middle School and the PTO will be hosting our last event before graduation, our annual Sports Day Event for grades 6, 7, and 8. Students will also be treated to a visit from Mr. Softy. Our graduation ceremony will be on Wednesday, June 21st, in the PAC. I want to thank the board, the Town Council, and Mayor Gennelli for all the support they have shown Mr. Kukuchi and me at all our events this year. I want to take a moment to say a special thank you to Dr. Reiser for her consummate years of service to this district, for where at least 22 of them, I had the privilege of either working with her or for her. You'll be so missed, but I'm not saying goodbye, only good luck. You're not getting rid of me that easily. Have a great evening, everyone, and a wonderful summer. Thank you.
Good evening again, everyone. Stephen Vigiani, principal of Secaucus High School. May 24th was the annual Hudson County Academic Achievement Recognition Program, where our valedictorians and salutatoriums throughout the county were honored. Mr. Lewis and Dr. Reiser were both there. It was such a nice event to spend the evening with our valedictorian, crusade, bavzar, and salutatorium, Ayush Agarwal, along with their parents, and the other very many impressive graduates from our county. Also, on the 24th, our band performed here in the PAC for the Spring Concert. Mr. Fournier takes this opportunity to recognize his senior students. He always prepares very nice words to say about each one of them, reflects back on their journey, and this year, the students paid a special honor to him. All 11 seniors went to the podium and spoke about how he had an impact on their lives and their time at Secaucus High School. It was a very nice, special moment for Mr. Fournier. We thank him for everything he does for our students. On June 2nd, the Secaucus Volunteer Fire Department sponsored the After the Fire Assembly for our seniors. Two remarkable individuals, Alvaro Lanis and Sean Simons, were students at Seton Hall during the 2000 fire, and they spoke to students about perseverance, hope, overcoming adversity, and fire safety, especially when it comes to dorm life, life in college, or independent living. On June 6th, we held the Senior Academic Awards Ceremony, where close to $80,000 in scholarship money was awarded to members of the graduating class. Thank you to all the organizations within our schools, our town, surrounding area that so generously support our students each year. And a special thank you to Mrs. Susano, who does a great job in organizing this event. She begins the process very early on in the school year. It's a huge undertaking. She does a great job. Earlier that day, our seniors enjoyed a beautiful day at the pool, at the local town pool. Thank you to Mayor Gennelli, the Swim Club, and the Recreation Department. Our students had a great time. June 7th, our seniors enjoyed breakfast while they were presented with the 2023 Yearbook. That makes value number 47, believe it or not. A big thank you to Ms. Kim, who does a wonderful job as the yearbook editor. It's really a beautiful addition. And Mrs. Butler, who is in charge of yearbook finance, sales, advertisement, and ads. On June 8th, the senior, on June 8th, we had the senior prom. Students looked amazing as they walked the red carpet, and later, they had a great time eating, socializing, and dancing at the Valley Regency. On June 13th was our Athletic Awards Ceremony, organized by Mr. Voorhees and Carol Ann Shiner. It was so nice to hear from the coaching staff of each team as they recognized our student athletes and their accomplishments. And thank you to the Athletic Club for sponsoring dinner before the ceremony. And yesterday, our seniors went on a trip. They had a great time at Kalahari Water Park. That's inside, thankfully, because it rained most of the day yesterday. On June 21st, our seniors will participate in the Clapout Event, where they will visit both elementary schools, walk the halls one last time, and be acknowledged by their former teachers. Also want to point out, Ms. Palmasano is the senior class. She dedicates so much time in making sure that our seniors have these memorable events, and she makes sure everything is perfect with each one. And finally, our graduation is scheduled for June 22nd at 7:00 PM on the football field. Been watching the weather, so keep our fingers crossed. We're hoping for nice weather. However, we have a backup plan. All seniors were provided... hoping for nice weather. Dr. Reiser, I want to wish you the very best as you move on. Seems like just yesterday, we were neighbors teaching in the, in the science department 20-plus years ago. So thank you for your guidance and leadership throughout the years, and all the best to you. Thank you, everyone.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. As you know, this is the, my final board meeting of the school year for 2022-2023, so I don't have too much to report on. Just before our Memorial Day break was the high school's annual field day hosted by the SGO, and it went very well and was a very enjoyable day before break. Along with the activities, there was the Kona Ice Truck for students to have a sweet treat while watching their classmates compete. And when we returned from the break, the National Honor Society hosted a basketball tournament to raise money for their senior scholarships, and it was a very enjoyable and fun event. Lastly, I would like to thank all of you for welcoming me to sit up here with all of you to address and discuss, or discuss, any matters or concerns that students had this year. This was a very interesting and valuable experience, and it will continue next year. So thank you once again, and I will see you in September.
I just want to take a moment to thank all the principals for giving us organization reports every month, on top of everything else that you have in your hectic day. You have to keep us informed and the town informed, and just want to thank you for all that extra time that you put in. Paige, it was great having you on the board. We are going to miss you, and I wish you the, the best in the future.
Yes, I do have correspondence tonight. It is a thank you note to the Seacaucus Board of Education. Just two small words to express, express so much gratitude. Thank you so much for the beautiful glass keepsake. It's simply beautiful. Jo Marie Bennett.
Acting Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I apologize in advance if I'm a little emotional. Been here for a long time. It's, um... I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do this. Paige, I'll miss you. It's been great having you as a neighbor. So, good evening. As many of you know, this will be my, this will be my last board meeting as acting superintendent. I would just like to thank our administrators, Gracie O., my board office family, and the entire district for supporting me throughout this journey. It was a crazy two years, but I wouldn't trade this experience for the world. I feel that we have accomplished great things over this time. I can honestly say that every decision that I've made was in the best interest of our staff and students. Next month, we will be welcoming Dr. Eric Alfonso as our newly appointed superintendent of schools. I truly do wish him the best going forward. Tonight will also be my last board meeting. I will attend as Seacaucus School District employee. As you may already know, I will be leaving the district mid-July to pursue a director's position in the Harrison School District. Although fiscally, this is a great opportunity for me and my family, it is bittersweet. I truly love this district, and I love the staff and students that make... I'm sorry. That makes Seacaucus such an amazing place to work. I want to thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for making me feel at home for the past 23 years. Yesterday, we had our final DIAC meeting for the school year. Unfortunately, so much was discussed that it was impossible to turnkey that information to you tonight. I'll be forwarding a summary of all, of the whole meeting to the board members early next week. There is a correction for the high school suspensions from last month. I believe I reported eight. It was seven. And I apologize for that. They, this month, the high school had two suspensions. The middle school had three. Huber Millridge and Claridan had zero. Tonight, there are no HIBs to vote on. I thank all of you, and have a great night.
Business administrators' report.
Good evening. Tonight, under governance, we are amending Resolution R. 1.38, compensation for Igbat Magnat. It will be $32. Also, we will be adding to the agenda Resolution R. 1.54 to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to accept Rosa Kudus, to appoint Rosa Kuduski as psychology teacher at a compensation of $61,549. Dr. Reiser, it has been a pleasure working with you for the last two years. I thank you for all your support over the last two years, and I wish you well in everything you do, because I know you will be successful.
Public agenda? Governance personnel?
Under governance, we reviewed and discussed the job applicants that will be, we will be voting on tonight, along with some resignations, compensations, maternity bonding leaves, and medical leaves. We discussed revising the Director of Curriculum and Instruction job description and the Director of Buildings and Ground Safety and Security job description. We discussed the need to amend a few resolutions with minor updates, which will be on tonight's agenda. There was also discussion on salary approvals for the summer program and for the next school year, along with stipends, appointments, and transfers, which will also be on tonight's agenda. We discussed setting up a class for teachers who might have an interest or a need to learn sign language to help some students. That is it. And with that, I'd like to, the board to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 1.01 through R. 1.54. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hey, Mr. Bartletta? Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Uh, policy?
Sorry, before we start, what about motion 1.01?
I'm sorry?
Did we vote on motion 1.01? Because Enrico just said resolution up to R. 1.54.
Right, that was the new one that was added, correct?
That was, the addition was added at the end.
Yes. Motion 1.01. Did we just vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did not.
Right, I stopped at R. 1.5. You're correct. R. 1.01 as well. Approval to appoint the, yes. Wait, why is there two R.? No, no. Oh, and M. 1.01, you mean?
Yes.
End motion, M. 1.01. You are correct. I apologize.
So, does it have to be voted again?
Yes.
All right. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Uh, policy?
Okay, I would like to, um, the board to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 2.01 through R. 2.02.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Education curriculum?
My turn. Am I, I have to change it and send it to you again, because I made some edits. So disregard the three emails I've already sent you. So we had another wonderful meeting kicked off by Ms. Felicia Lot. Discussions included kindergarten orientation with a great informational packet and a comprehensive handbook addressing kindergarten screening. We spoke a little more in depth about the kindergarten screening process, and that's for students that did not attend Millridge Pre-K, and this is to assess baseline levels for incoming kindergarten students. Ms. Lot also discussed the Hudson County Sober Youth Program and Gardening with Friends Program. These programs address self-care, avoiding alcohol, tobacco, and drug use. We discussed our multi-tiered Systems of Support, MTSS, that will be growing and refined over the school year to use academic data from Linkit, Alex, Dibbles, et cetera. We also discussed minor curricular updates for high school health, vis ed, and driver's ed curriculum and in-district field trip approval. In light of Ms. DeLa Cruz's wonderful speech, we want to acknowledge that we do want to see an increased exposure and acknowledgement for the performing arts. We encourage all teachers to inform the building principals to have students included in the showcase for any celebration of successes or activities. Lastly, clarification will be provided in the future to parents and students on how to replenish any lost Patriot points. With that, I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 3.01 through R. 3.04.
Motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Uh, Operations Committee Finance?
Okay, we had, we as well had a wonderful meeting. And we got, we got many project updates from, from our Buildings and Grounds group. Huber Street will be the big winner this summer, having a, a new ventilation and HVAC system installed, as well as classrooms being, the computer lab will be split into two classrooms, and there will be a staff bathroom installed on the second floor. They are still, in the high school, middle school, high school, they're still working on the update of the batting cages. So that, that's an ongoing, there, that should be done soon, I think, so soon. Some, some finance issues that came up is we had an update with the auditor, and we rebalanced our reserve accounts. He gave us kind of an end-of-year, an end-of-year finalization. We did discuss renewing Dr. Vicky, which will be approved at this meeting. We also had a discussion on the approval of ESS for both the classroom aids and the, and the subservice. So a win for both, I, I feel. So, that's it. Let me just read this after I go by. So I'd like to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 5.01 through R. 5.34.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
On Resolution R. 5.01, approval of the check register, I recuse myself on the payment to Reed Academy and vote yes on all other resolutions.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Safety, security, buildings, and grounds?
I'd like to accept the recommendation of Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt Resolutions R. 6.01 through R. 6.05, as described below.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Uh, nothing on the ad hocs. New business?
I'd like to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent and Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt Resolutions R., oh boy, 2023.01 through R. 2023.15 for school year 2023-2024, as described below.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Dr. Farinola?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Public forum?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Fogarty. I'm the attorney for the Seacaucus School District. This meeting is open to the public for the purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Seacaucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they are raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and will not be responsible for those comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments, since they can be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue informally. Your cooperation is appreciated. Thank you.
Mary Echols?
Good evening. Mary Echols, 308 Maple Street. Dr. Reiser, I can't believe I'm standing here tonight saying goodbye to an administrator to this distinct with your strength and knowledge you have brought to this district. I want to thank you first, as a parent, from a student from the past, and second, as a past board member that I've worked close with, for everything you have done for our children of the district. You truly will be missed by all. Thank you for all you have done and your great leadership. Good luck on your new journey. I just want to read you a little something. May you be proud of the work you do, the person you are, and the difference you, the difference you make in all you do. Good luck on everything. You will always be a patriot, but you're becoming a blue tide. Just know something. We are part of a blue tide also. My husband's a blue tide. So we are probably going to see you at some blue tide things. We were in the company of Artie Pettigrew, the vice president, because, you know, we have close tides there. And we said, "Oh, you're getting one of our people from our district." And he goes, "Oh." And we said, "No, you're getting a gem from our district." And that's true. You're a gem. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Randy Worthington and Eunice Abada?
Good evening. My name is Randy Worthington. I'm graduating senior and I'm with Eunice Abada, my co-captain of the Dragonfield team, and we have something that we'd like to ask of you tonight, and we prepared a speech that Eunice is going to say now. Uh, thank you, everyone. I'd like to start off by please thanking you for all you've done for my nine years here in the district. Randy's full 14. And I'd like to ask, I'd like to thank you for your continued support as a teammate, student, and as a member of our community. Your continued support is always appreciated, and I've never once wavered at any of your decisions or anything you guys have asked of us as students or implied us in this district. I'd like to thank you guys again for everything. Now, um, as a student, as a community member, I have no complaints with anything you guys have ever done, and I'd like to appreciate all that you've done again. have ever done, and I'd like to appreciate all that you've done again. But today, as an athlete, I have one grievance as the topic of championship rings. Now, as a member of the track community, as a team, I don't think that I, us, or our teammate, or association has ever come up with any type of complaint or anything to ask of you guys, but I'd like to speak out for this time and ask the administration if we could, as track and field sectional champions, please be awarded or gifted championship rings for our sectional championships. Now, out of our track and field program this year, we have seven sectional champions, two in throwing events, and one in distance, and one in distance, four in a distance relay. And I'd like to ask, as previously awarded to a team this year, I think it would be fairly appropriate, and I'd like to ask if we would be able to also be awarded championship rings for our achievements. Now, even though the two sports consist of two completely different ideologies, I mean, one includes a ball and one, we run through a line, I think success is defined by our situation and how we approach it and how we competed. And both of our teams have both have amazing success and capabilities, and we've also won our sectional state championships, I think is very amazing things, and I applaud the other team for doing so as well, through their adversity and their hard times. Now, if you still, I understand there is an idea that it would have to be the difference of a team sport, and I think our team is just, our track and field team is just so much a team and competes with these relays and events that just so happen to have the same capability of a team sport. Now, if it's not through technical definition, we also have our freshman year team who won sectional championship in 2020 for cross-country, which was a considered team sport. We also all have the capabilities and quantities of eight total school records combined this year broken, and I think that's another thing that's very important to us, that we also appreciate our recognition and everything. Now, I don't mean to question or show any type of, you know, harsh words, ideas, but I'd like to send a message that if there's a new precedent that to be a sectional champion, you will receive a ring funded for, gifted by the school board of ed and the athletic department. I'd like to ask that we be included in this conversation and given a fair chance to plead our case. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Comments?
I have a comment. I just wanted to say, great job to the middle school and high school chorus and their incredible teacher, Mr. Seafakis, for the performance last week. Special shout-out to Paige for your incredible performances there as well. You did awesome at the prom and at the chorus, and it's been a pleasure to watch you grow over the years. I think it's awesome that you've been able to serve as the voice of the student body as students are important, and they do provide incredible insight, ideas, suggestions, and they certainly should be heard. Thank you to our students that just spoke, Randy and Eunice. We congratulate you on your stellar athletic accomplishments and your upcoming graduation. Losing such amazing student athletes is always a bittersweet thing. Last but certainly not least, Dr. Reiser, I want to thank you for your decades of service in this district. I am so sad that you will be leaving, but I know that you will continue to be a leader, an innovator, and make a positive impact on the students that are extremely lucky to have you. You will be missed tremendously.
Anybody else?
Yes, I just also want to echo the comments about Dr. Reiser. I, you know, in the time that I've worked with you, you really have, it's very evident how much you care for the students and how much effort you put in, so I want to thank you for your dedication to this district. I want to congratulate all the teachers for making it through another school year. I know that, you know, you all look forward to your summer, and it is very, very well-earned, so I'm happy that, you know, the school year is over for you and you get to breathe. And congratulations to all our graduates and all of the parents that have supported the students throughout this year. We made it through another one, right? And every year, I think it gets a little bit easier as we still deal with, you know, the struggle that the pandemic led to, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got to say something. I echo everybody's comments. I mean, Dr. Reiser, you will be missed. You were a guiding light in this school for a time, and that was, and you guided us in a much-needed time, so. And in addition to all the resignations, I'd like to say that I'm going to miss one, Mr. Matt Miller, who's taken a job in another district, going on to a better opportunity. He's a hell of a guy, and I'm going to miss him a lot, so I'd like to say good luck and don't forget us.
Good luck, Matt. Congratulations, AJ.
I just want to say again to Dr. Reiser, I said it last time, you know, when we needed a hero, you were there. Thank you. You know, you came in at a very difficult time, and you did great, and, you know, you've made a lasting impact on many, many children, and I think everybody owes you a great depth of gratitude, and I thank you very much.
Anybody else? We're going to follow-up on it, yeah. On the rings. So, Dee, I do want to thank you for all the time that you've put in. You stepped up when we needed you. I do wish you all the best in your new position. Matt, good luck to you. AJ, congratulations. I want to wish everybody a happy summer. Enjoy the time off and the rest, and we'll see you all again in September. Motion closed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.